Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes for March thirty one twenty five, Commissioner Dean.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and possible approval of minutes for March thirty one twenty five, Commissioner Dean.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Please?
Item four, discussion and possible approval of the class called Sunnyside Estates. Okay, discussion and approval of the class called Sunnyside Estates. You give then.
So thirteen thirty five, about thirty four mile west of the county line.
Does it look like you're on the line?
I think it's your action.
Thirteen thirty five.
It did say.
Thirteen, yeah, I think that's kind of, I'm pretty sure.
Thirteen thirty five, about thirty four mile west.
It's district two.
Is it any of those?
Yeah, it's district two. I thought it was.
Yeah, we did that key, sludge it down. And there wasn't a place for the nine nine one call minutes.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve. If this is what we want to set go on.
Yeah.
Mr. Davis.
Is there a second minute?
No.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Please?
Yes.
Did you put that back out? Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number five, discussion and possible approval of the class called Parkland Heights.
Of course, this one will take. It is on, uh... County Street two seven ninety. And... Twelve hundred.
How many houses is gonna be in here?
I believe it's eight, we have eighty six parcels. Some of them can get combined up here as well. So it may not be actually eighty six, but there's eighty six parcels.
Okay. I'll need your stamp, Jill, that's what I try. Oh, well, that'll work. I'll make a motion to approve.
Say.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes. And we won't, it will not be accepted or maintenance on us either.
Okay, item number six, discussion and possible action on the procedures to engage the services of the construction manager.
I had put this on the agenda because Mike is getting bombarded. People are stopping him in the hallway. They're calling him on the phone. Um, I just think there's a better way for him to get requests to do jobs. Um, so I'm asking that maybe we send him an email and in the subject line put like work order. And that, that happens that way because he is, he is getting just overran with stops in the hallway, phone calls. Also, he needs to be involved, I think Zach even sent this out last year when he was chairman. He needs to be involved from start to finish on a project. And sometimes he's getting overlooked and they get into the middle of the project and then something goes wrong and they call Mike. And that's not fair to Mike and that's not the way our project should be done. Um, he also needs to work on the bid specs, uh, when we have something going on. And, uh, I think if it's something that, that needs to, if it's not superficial, he's getting a lot of superficial requests. If it's not functional, if it's a superficial thing that they just want done because they think something needs to look pretty, I think they need to CC that either to whoever's over at the courthouse, whatever, or one of the commissioners, so that Mike is just not running around in circles. Um, it's just not fair to him to stop him in the hallway and say, hey, I need this, or call him on the phone, hey, I need this. We really need some kind of work order process, procedure. And I think an email with a work or, you know, the work is just gonna help him. It's gonna make him more functional than if he's trying to run circles around picking up all the phone calls and texts and all that. So that was just my suggestion is that we try to do Mike more email request with work order and then he's involved start to finish and works on the bid specs.
Last week we had a little deal at OSU Extension where one person had called me. There was actually two problems down there, but, uh, I forget his name, at USDA called and told me they had an electrical issue. I'd been there, looked at it, scheduled an electrician, and then somebody else called about OSU Extension with a separate problem. But I thought I'd already been there, looked at what was going on, had an electrician, when there was actually a problem at the front of the building and a problem at the back of the building. To OSU and USDA, I just assumed when they told me OSU Extension, we were talking about the same thing. So the head of the department or whoever would have sent me an email, I would have known, oh, we've got a problem here and here, not thinking I already had it handled, but scheduled them on to my next problem.
Probably a procedure that y'all need to put in place and send out to everybody. How to contact him, like I said, via email, that way you're tracking it also, you know?
Well, and he could have easily had an electrician out one day at USDA and then one day at OSU. And that would have been a cost that we could have erased because we could have had one visit.
Yeah, it was caught.
Yeah.
It worked out, but it would have saved a lot of confusion.
On some things too, people need to know that he's not, he's not necessarily the one that approves or not approves your projects.
Right.
And I think some people, not official, but I think some people think that he approves or not approves things and he is not.
I mean, repairs, yes. But like projects, those need to probably be handled differently on non-official people. But that, that was just, uh, I had, I first originally put it under executive session because I thought it had to be and then talked to Charles and it didn't have to be. But I just think if we can do a procedure where the emails are done and, uh, you know, they CC it to whoever's in charge of courthouse or whatever, chair, you know, that we have an idea because there's some things that I, I don't have a problem with saying, hey, go ahead, but, you know, just because you want something taken down and something painted, that's not necessarily, and there's a lot of times I think Mike gets asked to do things that he's really not, he is the construction superintendent, he's really not the person to call about, there's things that you just don't call him about. He shouldn't be taking care of those. He should be taking care of the construction.
Okay. Who's doing that?
We just have different, different people that are calling and, I mean, it's just small things that they could probably take care of, um, you know.
It's not one person.
It's not just, it's...
The whole county.
Yeah.
From one end to the other, on different.
I, I just think there's a more, when I worked at the school district, we had a work order requisition form. If you were a teacher, you filled it out, you sent it to your principal, your principal looked at it. If they deemed it was necessary, they sent it over to the building superintendent and then he funneled it out to the electrician or the air conditioning people or we called somebody. I just think there's a more efficient way to do this and I think it needs to be probably an email process with the subject title, work order. Because, you know, you start calling people, there's people that call me all the time and I'm like, okay, I'll get, you know, and I tell myself I'm gonna take care of it and remember it when I get back to the office. I don't necessarily remember it, but if I have an email, I'm gonna take care of it. I just think there's a more efficient way to do it. So I'd like to say that we need to, as commissioners, send out a letter to everybody letting them know that this is a new process we're gonna do.
Okay.
With that said, with you guys.
Yeah. Everywhere I've ever worked, so even when we have work orders for our equipment stuffs.
Right.
If it makes sense, it needs to be tracked.
Yeah.
Okay.
You'll make a motion to that?
Yes.
Okay, say.
Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number seven, discussion and possible action on the course from the emergency management director, Grady County Fire Department, safety director at construction and superintendent of the state.
Well, good news is we got even working one, two inches of rain in the past week in the county. We don't have a whole lot scheduled for the next week or so, but, uh, it was very beneficial along with a little, some people even got a little bit of snow out of the deal, so. But, uh, hopefully we'll still pick up with some additional rainfall here in the next couple, three weeks before we get into May. Uh, secondly, a reminder, I'll be down to that lawton this third to do for the Region Three, uh, preparedness and response workshop. I'm giving a, a presentation on our trauma kits that we did to all the schools in the county and how we put them together, how we raised the money and the items and stuff in there. So I'll be doing a presentation with Mike Faye from, uh, total emergency management, so. Other names over here?
Kim?
Um, we did have our special board meeting on Thursday night, we did have ten of our eleven board meeting members there. Um, the LZ class, Lanzo class was Saturday and I think we had about fifteen people show up for training on that. Um, the FMAG kickoff is Thursday where we'll visit about the FMAG reimbursements on the Norwich fire. Um, we did get our calm data bill for March and it did exceed our seventy-five-hundred-dollar blank FPO by about nine hundred dollars. That was due to us going to Little X and leading, um, with Task Force. And those will be part of the FMAGs too, I believe those, those, uh, were FMAG fires. Also, the Naples Community Dinner is Sunday, the thirteenth. Any questions, Jamie?
Well, she was talking about the FMAG deal, we're having a meeting at, uh...
The tenth.
The tenth, which is...
Thursday.
Thursday, uh, over at the, at our office in the community room. Since our fire that we had in the Norwich area was declared, you know, during the process, uh, we were eligible for FMAG funding. So any of the fire departments, the, even the sheriff's department, the police department, the fire departments.
County barns.
Uh, county barns or anything, if you had any expenses related to response, like I think we had a grader from District Three.
We had a grader in Dogger right there.
Yeah, so, you know, we need to have somebody from, uh, either, all the agencies. And I think I've emailed everybody if I've got, if I remember right, everybody got that. So it's gonna be April tenth, it's gonna start at eleven o'clock over there, it's, we're gonna run until seven o'clock, so the volunteers will have time. But the state will be there to help fill out the two fourteen forms and everything that we, that's required for an FMAG and help us receive a little bit of money back from, from family. And y'all know how quick that comes in.
Yeah.
So.
And, um, I got an email today about fees being waived at certain, um...
Landfills.
Landfills, yes.
Yeah.
That's the word. And Southern Plains was on it.
Yeah, the governor's declaration of, of everything, they put a DEQ and, uh, has put out a list of all the, uh, landfills in the particular areas. So if people had damage like from their homes or business or something like that, they could take it free. Southern Plains is ours over at Elick, so it is on there, but like I say, we, we were real fortunate as far as not getting any, any damage or anything, except some tree lands and stuff, so.
Bobby?
Um, well, with the, the deal of being at Apple last week, the majority of the time, I did, was able to conduct two safety orientations, one with, uh, one year employee for District Two and this morning with, uh, the treasurer's office. Um, but I will be participating in a D E R training class at the session that Apple will be doing tomorrow, so I'll be out there with that, um...
That it?
That's pretty much what I have. Uh, some of the smaller projects and the missed appreciation on that was, uh, when the other commissioner was here, that was a lot of the stuff concerning the county building was, um, Mike, so I didn't really touch it, there were some minor things, but I'm more than welcome to be a helper, to do, um, you know, yeah, A E D boxes, I can hang them up. You know, but what I was told before was he handles all that stuff and, you know, as again, finding those, uh, small, uh, small projects that I can do, you know, as it light, you know, get somebody, whatever you guys need, even Mike, I've told Mike many times, whatever he needs help with, I'm a better worker.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Bye.
Uh, last week we walked with architects a few days on a project going there. Spray foam merger out at District Two today, starting that. And then the electrical project at your barn, PSO needs a right-of-way if we're gonna run through between your building and that back parking area. The PSO guy told me we need a right-of-way. Now, they have somebody that can survey that and write it up, but we have to know Horizon sign it. And I didn't know if that's a Charles deal or who gives that permission for them to have the right-of-way. Because it's not gonna be down the edge of the road, it's basically gonna be right through your yard.
You mean like up the south side of it?
They're gonna come from that road up the south of your building, uh, between your actual building and that area that cover back there where you park things in, they're gonna come through that gravel around the corner, set transformer right there by where the meter's at right now.
Okay.
But they need a right-of-way so they have access, I mean, it's going underground, so they probably can't never have anything, but they need it in their paperwork that they have a right-of-way there for the utility.
If, if that's a Charles.
We think that's somebody that will survey it, write it down, you guys just need to approve it. Yeah, they have somebody for a fee that will do it, but I didn't know if we can just give. Less of a hassle, they could do it, then us have to find someone, Mike, find somebody and coordinate it. So we're, I'm, we're good with just having them do the work and we'll sign it? I agree.
Yeah.
Okay, item number eight, public comments, comments from the public will be limited to two minutes, time may be extended at the discretion of the board. Mr. Todd Marks?
We're trying to ask for, uh, are those in maintained where we live? Um, there's about a half a road that are becoming almost impassable for us. And there's, um, you know, twelve families, two of them with kids, and one of the roads is washing out. Um, I have a, I have a small tractor, but, you know, we try to figure out it's just...
What road, sorry?
Twenty-nine eighty-five, I'm sorry. Um, County Road twenty-nine eighty-five.
County, uh, County Street.
And my, and my, my GPS calls it County Street, but the sign is that there's a twenty-nine eighty-five, so I apologize for that.
Okay.
And then fourteen oh six, County Road fourteen oh six, and fourteen oh seven. And those roads total two and a half miles, two miles total, I mean, all of those maybe, so they're, they're small roads.
What's the intersecting road twenty-nine eighty-five?
Uh, fourteen, um, ten.
Fourteen ten.
So from, from seventy-six, I can pull my GPS, it'll help you, but from seventy-six connects at, uh, one hundred ninety. And then a county line road, that's where fourteen ten intersects right there at County Line Road.
What, okay, we're, what intersects fourteen oh six and fourteen oh seven?
That twenty-nine eighty-five.
Twenty-nine, huh? What?
Twenty-nine eighty-five.
Oh, so twenty-nine eighty-five intersect.
Yes.
Okay.
This is exactly what it's like. So this is where, this is twenty-nine eighty-five, I'm sorry, seventy-six. This is twenty-nine eighty...
This is District Two.
This is twenty-nine eighty, this is twenty-nine eighty-five, fourteen oh seven and fourteen oh six.
Okay.
And this whole, this little section, it's only a half mile long, and then this is maybe quarter mile, and fourteen oh six is where another eight families live, so we'd be asking to come here, forty-six and forty-seven.
Okay.
Collectively, two miles, um, yeah, total road.
What's your name again?
Todd Marks, M A R K S.
My knee-jerk reaction is that it's probably not a county road, it's probably a privately maintained road. Without looking it, without looking it up.
Right.
So, uh, you know, being that it's not in county inventory, there's not a whole lot that the county can do.
And I was told that twenty-six years ago ballpark, that someone playing, that someone took, that they, county machine took some gravel off the edge of his driveway and so they cut that terrain off and that town got cut off.
And it was maintained.
So that's what I'm saying, he's, he's dead and gone.
Yeah.
And now we have families out there, children and stuff, we're trying to get them out of there.
And I have a little tiny car, but it has to go through lakes.
What's the phone number?
Four oh five, four one four, eight six three three.
Get out and look at it and see if it's county road or if it's not, if it's not, um, probably not much we can do on it, but we'll get out and look at it.
Yeah, and, and we'd be happy with any of the roads and if it's just one of them or two of them.
And if it's not on a routine maintenance, maybe we could just get some help, we have tractors. And so maybe we could just get some product out there and we'll spread it and we'll try to deal with it, you know, we have tractors.
It all comes down to whether it's just in the inventory.
Right, that's, yeah, that's their responsibility.
Yeah. There's, because it, me and that, I, I've got a bunch, I'm the District One commissioner, but we have a bunch of housing additions over there, then they're private, they put the housing addition in, but they're probably maintaining roads. And my knee-jerk reaction is that's probably what this is.
Okay.
Since it's, since it's in such...
Fourteen oh six and seven, I think, may, may fall into that. Twenty-eighty-five, I know y'all used to take care of.
Yeah.
And that, I know it was their own car, man, I heard, I thought we complained and so y'all said, well, fine, we're out. So I don't know if it's permanently decommissioned or if it could be...
Re-commissioned.
Right.
Because it used to be, so. That's it for us.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gary, yes.
Oh, I think I was, I was...
I think some of the...
The plant, all of them have to be planted, because I don't see any...
Van's...
I'm here, y'all, I've got an item down here at number sixteen, so.
Oh, okay.
D, huh? D replace, replace them? D, sorry, D, L H V A.
I think he might have been that other...
D, nobody named D.
I think that might have been his wife.
Okay. All right. Item number nine, new business. In accordance with the open meeting act, Title twenty-five, upon statutes three eleven A nine, new business is defined as any matter not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda. Item number...
You have any?
Yep. Item number ten, acknowledgment of an engagement letter from the state auditorium.
Just in knowledge, just in knowledge.
They are here today.
What?
Doctors. They're starting today. The doctors are starting today.
Okay, all right, we need the evidence to sign the...
You did a twenty-three, twenty-four, huh?
I believe so. What?
Here. Okay. Okay, that's all right.
Hold habits that hard.
Item number eleven, discussion and possible approval of the burn ban for Grady County.
I'd just recommend that we all, you know, we could probably take that off the agenda if it does come up in the future, you know, and we meet the criteria a little better. Instead of, I'll advise you on it. If it does come up in the future, you know, and we meet the criteria a little better, instead of all the advice you own it, but with the rain we've got, you know, we should be, green and should be progressing real well for the next week or two. We need it back on the agenda, I'll, I'll let you know at a time.
Okay. So we just need most to remove it from the agenda, just no action?
Yeah, no action, yeah.
Okay, item number twelve, discussion of possible approval of a fair housing resolution. My question to approve. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Item number thirteen, discussion of possible approval of reconciliation, consignable and equipment inventory important for the beginning of a new Grady County treasure.
And this the resolution I think Bob has brought home.
Yes, I have paper work.
Okay.
My, um, per recommendation from Ricky Brown's State Auditor's Office, he advised me as to what to present to you all for my exit information as being treasurer, so I have provided you with my inventory, current inventory. We, on the thirty-first, we balanced all of our cash drawers, verified those. I have proof collateral in there with both banks, verified and balanced both Liberty and First National. Verified my investment through the thirty-first of March, verified end of the month, uh, collateral with both banks as well. So, and all that information, all that is provided in those. And that's just what, I'll make you a copy of that once I get it signed, but that, that's just saying that, that you do have the information that I just stated.
Okay. My question to approve.
Second.
Okay.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to make copies?
No, that's yours.
Okay.
Yes, that's yours. Oh, can I have that letter though, please, and I'll make me a copy.
This one.
Uh-huh, and Harter's a copy, yes, thank you. Please. Thank you.
Okay, item fourteen, discussion of possible action on the table item to appoint a board member to the pedal tax implement financing tip district.
I talked to Cindy, and, uh, so Shannon is going to do that if we want her to do that, so that Cesar's office will take care of that, and make a motion to approve.
I will second that.
Let me do that one.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, item fifteen, discussion and possible approval to accept a bid from Dexter Blakes for following properties. Parcel ID C zero zero one dash zero zero, one one four dash zero zero one dash zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero. T I D number twenty-two two zero six, in the amount of four hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy cents. And parcel ID number C zero zero one dash zero zero dash one one four dash zero zero two dash zero dash zero 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 dash zero zero. T I D number twenty-two two zero seven, in the amount of five hundred and thirty dollars.
This is the one we either tabled or took no action on, cause we wanted to see if we wanted it or if the VOTEC might want it. But we, John went out and looked at it, and we don't want it, and I don't think the VOTEC wants it, it's over there, south of that park, on the Boston Park, and you know, you can't get across that bridge anymore, so.
Yeah.
I don't think it'd be beneficial, so I make a motion that we accept the bid.
Second.
Tom wrongs on road tracks.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Item sixteen, discussion of possible approval of a contract naming principal design as an architect for DA for house renovation.
Morning.
Morning.
Again, I've got two copies of the contract here, uh, again, my name's Ben Smith with Principal Design. This is a standard B one thirty-three, that is an AIA or American Institute of Architects contract. Just about any architect is gonna use that. Um, the, the B one thirty-three is specific to having a construction manager as, as the constructor, so that would be low approved. What's the gist of it, there's, I mean, it's a contract, um, most of it is how to get rid of me. But, it outlines, um, sort of the, the things that you should probably pay attention to, or the, the phases of delivery. Um, that's broken out into four phases, schematic design, design development, construction documents, and, uh, construction administration. At each one of those checkpoints, we'll come back to you, you know, with, uh, with the C M, with the budget update, you know, with.
You know, where we are withdrawing and all that kind of stuff.
You know, we've been busy since, um, since last time we met, we've been up here half a dozen times, Mike. Um, and my project manager Walt Henry's been up here a couple more times, thanks for, uh, and we've just about got the entire building surveyed out, and who's where, and how much storage they've got, we've been over the DA's building, and we're just wrapping up about the same. They've got scope there now. But other than that, it's, you know, if you have any specific questions about the agreement, you can, you can ask, the fee is, is base six plus one percentage for renovation, so it'll be a seven percent fee, which is industry standard for something like this. There is, um, the way, so I, I still consider this being the feasibility phase. So what we're doing right now would actually be sort of an hourly fee. But if we move forward with the project, we'll just absorb that and give it a schematic design fee. Right, if, if, if it turns out that this is a hundred million dollar project, it's not going to, and you gotta plug on it, and give us those for our hourly.
No. Okay, make a motion to approve. Do you wanna sign this in your report, or should you make Gary's since he's chairman?
You probably signed it, I would say, as chairman. I want you to be a daddy in the money.
That's what I thought.
Do you need everybody to sign?
Yes, one, one I'll keep, one you get.
Okay.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Yes.
Let me run. Like I said, we're already started in, in a heavy, so the next phase will be into getting into actual space planning. How we're actually gonna organize everybody, and, um, you know, we had a, we had a nice discussion, uh, Ruth and I and, and Walt, uh, last week. Sort of about, about the scope and where we're going, and I think that was really a good conversation.
Do we need to go on and open a P O, Sydney, in case, in case something happens and it doesn't fall under the, okay. Do you want to help me?
I just need one.
Is there a price in that contract?
That's all.
There's some non-hourly prices.
Okay. We will just continue, I consider this formal, um, and we'll be back to any updates, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number seventeen, discussion of possible approval of a roadside right-of-way roadside agreement. With your name, Shapera, and Grady County.
I was trying to get him, so we're going to do like a short-term one, um, and then we're gonna get him on fiscal year. Um, he had about seven hundred counties that asked him about fiscal year, cause originally when he, uh, he gave this to us, he did it April twenty-twenty-five to April twenty-twenty-six. And you know, about fiscal year, so this is April to the end of June, and then we'll have a new contract, June to July. So I make a motion to approve this right-of-way agreement, so I can get my weeds killed.
Hey, now you're doing this just with him, or, I mean, just your district?
Well, uh, uh, they put Grady County, so the contract is mine, I didn't know if you guys were gonna use him or not.
Well, I said, I didn't know about it, I saw it.
Okay.
On the agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, I've been using, uh, Matt Reek.
Okay.
From down south, but, uh.
I, I don't know if you know his, his, so if his, if it doesn't work, if the weeds don't get killed.
Yeah.
He'll come out and mow it for you.
Yeah.
So.
Well, see, that's a good thing.
Yeah, so he guarantees it kills the weeds and off the grass, or he'll come out and mow it.
Yeah.
So it's a minus like sixty-three miles that I've been having to do, it's some harder to write, you know, harder for the guys to get to mow and stuff.
Um, do you know about what the cost to do that?
It's, well, this one, to get it, um, so sixty-three miles from April to June is gonna be nineteen thousand, so it's three hundred dollars a mile.
Three hundred a mile.
The, the other one, there's options, but one of them is, is seven hundred dollars a mile, but it, it proven that they look like pruned trees too.
Yeah, so they prune those trees and they keep them from growing, they spray something on them to keep them from growing.
That's the year-long contract.
Yeah, that's the year-long contract.
Good, glad to know that, I wasn't aware of that. Cause guy, I've been using all he does is spray. And it's been running us around twenty-five thousand or so, isn't it? I, I forgot how many miles we're doing, I don't remember.
Tell it, yeah, or six hundred something, it's forty a mile.
Forty.
You don't have to supply the chemicals.
Yes, but we.
Yeah, we're not.
We, we, yeah, we, yeah, we supply.
He's about six thousand for the chemicals.
Yeah. I just like the idea that if it doesn't work, he's gonna mow it.
Uh, yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth. Yes.
Item number eighteen, discussion and possible approval of amending an originally approved quote from Lineup Systems U S Incorporated for a new X-ray machine for the security vestibles to include A I, automatic, A I-driven threat detection software, and two one-liter roller tables, state contract number zero two four three.
So I apologize, um, I, I did not look at that clearly on that, and the eye that really detects the stuff wasn't over in the right-hand column, it was only in the left, so that wasn't included in, which is an additional sixty-seven hundred, but talking to the sheriff and it'll feel like that that's really a needed deal, so it's gonna be sixty-seven hundred dollars more than what it was, on top of I went and had the guys re-measure for me and called the lady back, and they had quoted point five, which is half of what the rollers are now, I don't think that will work, I, I think we need to stick with one on the front and one on the back like it is, a half would be cutting those in half, I know the one coming out, it would run into that deal there that you walked through, so that's about fifteen hundred dollars more, plus the sixty-seven hundred. So I think it was a total of like thirty-five, and now it's like forty-two, so.
And we still have the funds, it's coming out courthouse fund, so, and the funds are there to pay for this.
How much is the yearly license?
Sixty-seven hundred on that eye detection software, and then we need the fifty-five hundred yearly warranty, but the sheriff.
And I'm putting that in my, for, uh, my budget, I'm putting that in my budget.
Okay, so the fifty-five hundred's for the warranty, but if you look under that A I, automatic driven thing, it says yearly license, do we know?
Sixty-seven hundred.
It's gonna be sixty-seven.
Yes.
The courthouse will have the absorbent for the first year for everything, but then after that, the sheriff's put those two things, the fifty-five hundred and sixty-seven hundred in each bag.
You might explain what that eye is, so. What, what the eye is, it, it actually picks up items like your three D weapons that are being built anymore. Uh, it'll pick those up where your regular machines will not, uh, it detects a lot more, it's more sensitive. Uh, you know, these little pocket knives people try to get in, or the plastic, uh, knives that you're trying to get, it will actually detect those. So people can't get those in here, so. And that's one thing we're trying to do, is keep any type of weapon systems out of this building altogether, except for what I have in here.
Okay, I guess you need to sign this.
Cause we have to transfer more.
And Sydney did get the, and Sydney did get that quote through, printed off the contract, the state contract on that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Doug.
That's next.
We're sending it back.
Yeah, no, I, I made a motion.
Right, that's my.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth. Yes.
Item nineteen, discussion of possible approval of a quote from Diggy Security Systems for parking lot access control and surveillance addition in the amount of thirty-one thousand, three hundred and one dollars, thirty cents, and determines what account is we paid from, state contract, S W one zero four A D.
I, I wanna say something, because when we first started this parking lot, I wanted a bid for everything we were gonna do, so that we knew how much this parking lot cost, so we didn't get this in the bid with our fencing or electrical for our concrete. So from what I understand, we're. So from what I understand, we're going to probably have some change orders on our fencing and our electrical because we didn't look at Digis Systems. We didn't bring them in when we first did all the bidding, even though it's a state contract, I like to know cost all upfront. Because right now, we spent a hundred and forty thousand dollars for concrete fencing and electrical. And then we're gonna spend another thirty-one thousand cameras, so we're up to about a hundred and seventy-three thousand. I don't know how much more we're going to have on this parking lot, will there be anything after Digis?
No.
Okay, so we're right under two hundred thousand dollars.
If you want me to, and this is just something I'll put up, let me look at my budget, if I need to pay for this, I'll pay for it.
It's not that, my, my thing is, is when we're looking at something, I wanna see the whole cost, I wanna see the bids, I wanna know what everything's gonna cost. Upfront, and I know we can't do it all, but we knew the cameras were coming in, but we did not put that in with the specs. And I think we need to start doing that, even though it is a state contract, so that we do see the actual value of what we're getting into.
When we started this project, they, he knew that we were gonna have Digis do this, I just think that we forgot to put it in there, so that, that falls back on me, I'll take the blame for that.
But I, I'm good with whatever we decided to pay for it originally from, that we pay for it.
Right.
But I just think when we're looking at a project, we need to get every cost in so that everybody knows upfront what, what it's gonna cost us. I like to look at money figures and so that's where I'm at, I just wanna make sure we're not gonna go over. I don't wanna spend a quarter of a million dollars on parking lot.
Right.
And if we go over, if we in the two hundred thousand up range, that's what we're spending. And I think we need to look at total figures when we're doing something, I, I do make a motion to approve.
Do you want me to look at my budget on the capital amount and see if I haven't laid a paper this?
What, what did we, I don't think so, we approved it, we've already approved it, so we're good.
Yeah, we're fine.
Yeah.
I'll send it.
The fence and the electrical is gonna change a little bit.
Yeah.
They're gonna upsize the conduit on the electrician side and then the fence core post are gonna be taller than they were originally expected.
So there'll be some change orders.
And I think the max on that is ten percent of their original bid, we're gonna have to rebid it. So if it goes over ten percent of their original bid, we have to rebid it.
Mike?
Or re, we have to bid the change order.
Yes.
Okay, we have to bid the change order if it goes over ten percent?
Ten, yeah. All the double check, I'm pretty sure it's.
Mike, if it goes over ten percent of their original cost that they did originally, we have to bid the change orders.
I would think.
I would, I would say I wanna think it would, but.
We're going from three quarter conduit to one and a quarter.
Okay.
Okay, ready? All right, let's see, item number twenty, discussion and possible approval of a quote from Digis Security Systems for courthouse camera refresh with optional server pricing in the amount of thirty-two thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and twelve cents. And possible action on approving an optional upgrade for the server in the total amount of thirty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-four cents. And determine what account it is to be paid from, state contract, S W one zero four eight D.
Can I get your vote back quick?
What?
Can I get your vote back quick?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yes. Okay, I think we talked about, we did not wanna do any courthouse camera upgrade because of the renovation starting and that's kind of the way.
Something took in terms of car concentrating.
So I, I think we need to hold off on the courthouse camera upgrades because of the possible renovation start.
And then when you do look at that, I was telling the boss, he was out Wednesday and when I put it on the agenda, when Kelly and I was looking at this, it had that optional expense on the server upgrade. And I called Matt, or he called me back, and i- in a year or two, it's gonna have to be upgraded with the significant of the cameras that's being updated with more technology in them and all that. So that's not to be looked at at that time, but you got about a year or two.
And when we discussed this, we had talked about the renovation stuff, this just kinda gives you a ballpark figure now, where we'll be at, whenever we do need to do this. Cause once we get the renovation done, we do need to upgrade these cameras, there's a lot of them that keeps going out.
Well, and I think we can put the camera in with the renovation, I mean, the cam, and then if this servers for the courthouse, we can figure that all in with the courthouse. But that should be a part of the renovation, we just be, need to make sure that we let Mike know, you know.
Right.
So Samuel Swilber can get that in there.
Hopefully in a year or two, we're in here with some oil janked out or going back in with some.
I'm hoping faster than that.
Anything from China's gonna cost seven thousand times more.
Right, yeah.
But we have no control over it.
No.
What we do.
So are we going to table this or no action or?
I'd go no action. Then when we get to that point, then we'll get them back out with Mike and he'll do that.
Okay, item number twenty-one, discussion and possible action for awarding the table being for the rebidding of custom built A R fifteen rifles for the Grady County Sheriff's Department.
I want to go with a little bit Ballard Defense, um, I read their letter, I've actually called the company on the gas tube. And what it is, is it's not changing the bid, it's not changing the quote any at all. But the mid length is what they're saying could cause issue, but the owner of the company has already said that they're gonna basically do a carbine, which is, it, it's like a quarter inch difference. And they're not charging us nothing else, uh, so, um, and then the board to, or the optic, optics new out with Hollison, anything new, they're gonna, it's gonna be a limited lifetime warning on anything. And we'll have to talk to them, they're like, you know, if you're throwing it against the wall, yeah, we're not gonna do that, but just out shooting, if it fails on us, then they'll, they'll actually replace it under the warning, so.
Were you aware of Hollison issues prior to this?
No, cause I.
I never.
I shoot Hollison, I mean, all my guns have Hollison on them.
Everybody does.
And, uh, but like I said, a- and the reason, and this came from the, the district manager of Hollison is that it's such a new item that they have not tested with law enforcement military yet. So, um, and again, just like any other Hollison, until they go and throw them around and, and put them through the, the traps and stuff. Um, there's still a good site, I mean, the site that we shot, we shot over a thousand rounds, not one flaw in it. And usually if you're gonna have flaws in a, in an optic, it's with the first couple hundred rounds, uh, like I said. Yeah, it, most, anything's gonna have a limited warning on it, so, uh, but it is top of the line, it's a thermal site, uh, which what we need out here, uh, going through buildings and stuff too, so. But like I said, Dollar Defense, I actually met with the, the owner of Dollar Defense last week and, uh, we went over all this. Um, but yeah, they're the lowest bid by twelve thousand, a little over twelve thousand dollars, um, that's who I'd like to go with. I'm like, what's the difference?
Do you have any?
What about, this, their guns have been used for law enforcement? Is that?
It's, there's a lot of guns out there that, I mean, can say not been used for law enforcement, it's a new company, uh, and I say new company, this company has been in business for years. They've been making, um, stuff for the National Defense for Raytheon Company on guided missiles, um, and they're only been in manufacturing guns about the last two years. Um, like I said, we went out and shot the gun, we put it through the ringers, uh, you know, to come back and say that, uh, you know, air, aerial precision at one time wasn't law enforcement rated. Bushmaster wasn't law enforcement rated, we're just throwing that out there, uh, it, it's a good gun, like I said, we, we put it through the ringers when we took it out, so.
So your gun was kinda the rottweiler?
Yes, yes.
So when you say that he's changing something up, does that?
It's not gonna affect the price, it's not gonna affect anything on that gun, uh, what it is, is a mid length gas tube, which is what operates the gases that which operates that gun. Instead of going with a mid length, they're going with a carbine, which is like a quarter inch longer, is all it is, that's it. Because that was my questions and I, I've talked to some people that shoot guns all the time and asked them their opinion on it and so.
A quarter inch can make a big difference in whether the gun actually cycles around.
Right, and this is a quarter inch longer, which is the carbine length, so. And, and the owner of the company, I talked to him and he said that quarter of an inch, this gun will be flawless and he, he'll back it. For a little bit.
I think about that he's done.
Okay.
Which one? Yeah.
Did you break that?
No.
No, she will.
Ah, yeah, I'm still looking at the inner.
I'll move back a little bit.
You guys obviously know that I've only shot like a nine millimeter, okay, so I have no idea, I, I was very concerned about the letter, about the warning being, you know, no good. I was worried about us being the only agency in the country.
Actually, the U S Marshals are looking at this company to switch sheriff weapons over to.
Okay.
Uh, and I actually talked to the U S Marshal Johnny Coleman of North City and he is actually looking for these guns to do a contract with this company. They haven't yet, they're actually in the testing phase of this gun and they're very impressed with it.
All A R fifteens are the basic same rifle, I mean, I can go get, I've got five or six of them, I got some high end ones and I got some cheap ones.
Yeah.
He can bring the high end, like I have a LaRue that is like a four thousand, forty-two hundred dollar gun, and then I have a cheap one that I bought, I don't even know where it came from, and I got one I put together. When you bring them all in here, they're all the, if you, if they didn't have markings on them, you wouldn't know where they were. So they're all just a lower with parts kit inside of them, so.
This gun's a higher end gun too, I mean, the total of this gun with everything that we're putting on is around forty-one hundred dollars, so it's, it's not cheap.
Right.
By no means, so.
Okay, I'll second.
Carrie?
Let's keep that in.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-two, discussion and possible approval of tabled item for arranging closing on the property located at two twenty Hill, Los Angeles Avenue.
I am talking to Legacy Title and Moore and the only reason why I am is because the people that originally bought this property are quieting, quieting, ooh, I can't say. They're doing their, their title work to clear it up from the county to them and they're using lady in Moore at Legacy Title and I just thought it'd be easier to go on and use her title work to Grady, go back to Grady County. So I make a motion to use Legacy Title and Moore.
Same.
Do you know if you could W nine?
Um, yeah, I'll, I still have to talk to the lady, I've left a message for her, call me back, I just thought it would be easier if we do all that, so I need a W nine.
Yeah, we may have one, but. Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, discussion and possible approval to remove Ellen Teffner and add Mary Smith as requisitioning officer for total senior citizens.
Make a motion to approve.
Same.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Okay, ready? Discussion, item twenty-four, discussion and possible approval of divisional order from Camino Natural Resources for property name Ralph Ellison, zero seven zero seven, twenty-seven twenty-two fifteen, one west. Owner number two seventy-seven eighty-six.
So this land is by the fairgrounds, um, north side, this is north of the fairgrounds and then another section that's north and then north. So this is another well that's producing out east of town and apparently we received some paperwork on and this is just a division order so that they can send us some money.
Make a motion to approve. It's like that, okay.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
On this one?
Item twenty-five, discussion and possible approval of deposit checks from Camino Natural Resources in the amount of one thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars ninety-eight cents into the general fund, reference two seventy-seven eighty-six dash one.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, discussion and possible approval for deposit and E F T to, to D E A asset forfeiture program in the amount of nine thousand three hundred seventy-nine dollars fifty cents into the equitable sharing. D O J capital L A account.
So this is money that when Pete was working with the D E A, that when they went out on big bust deals, that we got, I don't know if I can get back at the right.
Percentage, we get a percentage of forfeiture.
And I keep track of each one that comes in and we are down to four after this one, so there's like four more cases still open that will receive money off of, when, it could be next year, they're not the fastest people in the world. Yeah, these are like back in twenty-three.
Carrie?
Yes.
Zach?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. You won't sign it if she answers for that?
Oh, I tried, I'm here. Yeah, I just fixed it.
You should believe us.
Yeah.
We gotta go back to Stevens.
That's one, I'm sure. I don't know for sure. That's what I would do.
Thank you, Charles.
Thanks, Charles. Item twenty-seven. Discussion and possible approval of continuing pipeline road crossing permits, water line fast line permits and driveway tenon permits. Motion to approve. Twenty-eight, discussion and possible approval of blanket poaching.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Twenty-nine, discussion and possible approval of Grady County purchase card payment to Bank of America for the current and previous months.
Second.
Gary.
Yes, yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Item thirty, review purchase orders generated by the Grady County governing bodies during current and previous months and authorize or deny payment of such purchase orders.
Okay, this is the Sheriff's Department. It's to the Grady County Jail Authority or Justice Authority. It's a partial payment on our estimated housing fees. So we're paying fifty thousand. Okay. Total senior citizens, and this is for their estimated payroll. And I'm gonna tell you upfront, I made a call to the total senior citizens last week because I was told there was an issue. And I advised them, if we don't start getting this stuff cleared up, they're gonna start paying it out of their donation account. They're not getting their purchase orders turned in for payroll. They are, um, their invoices are dated before the purchase orders, and we're talking about this one is their estimated August payroll that they're just turning in for eleven thousand two hundred fourteen dollars and fifty-five cents. The invoice was dated before the P O. Total senior citizens, estimated September payroll. September invoice is dated before P O. October invoice is also on this P O because one was never opened for October, and blanket P O shouldn't exceed. So this one is seventeen thousand five hundred eighty-three eighty-nine, and this is from September and October, and it is April. And then we have the Sheriff's Department, estimated bottle, bottled water, a hundred dollars. They went over by six dollars and eighty-five cents. I've also tried to tell people, I would rather you have a P O for more than less. Visual inspection, this is the assessor, estimated amount for tracking cars, two hundred fifty dollars. Proper procedures weren't followed. Invoice was dated before P O. It's a hundred sixty-four dollars. I think we probably need to revisit them. And then Highway, Highway District Two, this is us, estimated supplies, uh, blanket P O shouldn't exceed. So we had a blanket P O for fifteen hundred and we went over by two hundred ninety-two dollars and one cent, seventeen ninety-two oh one. And I talked to my girls in my office and asked them to please uncover more than we need.
What was that on?
I think it was just a bunch of raw seed. It was just a bunch of things, so, um, we we went and picked up new tools and some stuff, so. The emergency senior citizens to Williams Grocery Store, proper purchasing procedures were not followed. Invoices were dated before P O. Um, so they had P O open for eighty-five hundred, but they opened it after the invoice, so it's three thousand twenty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Visual inspection, O'Reilly's. Okay, the, so the invoice has a time two, two twenty-three on it. Requisition and invoice receiver were all brought in together at three twenty-five. Purchasing not responsible for this transaction. Purchasing procedures were not followed. So it looks like they got the P O the same day. They went and got, they got the requisition after they got the, um, after they got the product. Highway budget, these are all Echo registrations, looks like. We've got one for Bobby. They were registered on three four, but the requisition wasn't turned in until three five. And let's see. And then for Kim, same thing. They were registered on three four, but the requisition wasn't done until three five twenty-five. And it looks like when we registered it, we used a dummy P O number. That is against the law. I make the motion to approve these, but I do think we need to talk about some of these things possibly in executive session.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Gary, can we go back to, um, I guess it'd be new, Kim had given us this letter.
Go back to do it under there, under that, under there.
Fire department?
Yeah.
Um, I didn't think about this. Um, she'd asked us to book this letter.
Yeah, I've got it.
Okay.
I've got it.
We didn't, we didn't talk about it? Do we wanna talk about it? Do we wanna put it on next week's agenda?
We can, we can do it under the, uh, under the agenda item where they talk. It's set up to be able to vote on stuff in, in that agenda item.
Go back to.
Yeah, go back to agenda item number seven, um. Because it says discussion and possible action on court for merger command in the Grady County Department, so we can, we can take action on it. So I've got a letter in that.
Yeah, we.
Uh, Charles probably does need to read that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do, yeah. So do we wanna put it on the agenda for next week?
That, that's what I would think.
I, okay, 'cause I, I've been doing a little research on that.
Yeah, it, uh, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we'll just give it to Jill and then they'll put it on the agenda for next week.
I'm fine with this order changes and that's what she was asking about.
Yeah.
I'm fine with it. Well, Charles is fine with it.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
I'll stick it in that, your, your folder, Jill.
All right, let's see. Item thirty-one.
Oh, okay.
Just need the chart. Those are the ones that we came down and responded to and talked to you about, that they had to sign all of those. Well, and said, not that one, but the ones that she's spied with others. Do they want to be charged by all of those, those records?
Yeah.
Does this go?
Just the first one, sticker, her last page. Can you look through that, right, that you already made, just make sure that's all the sheriff's? Just make sure those are all the sheriff, the, the ones in your hand right now.
Oh, this is Robert.
Oh, that's Robert. Yeah. Make a motion. Yep.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
Did you jurn?
No.
No? Got my children all mixed up in here and I'm confused.
Did we read the agenda for these? About what it is. I'll read that.
We'll read, yeah, we'll, they'll prove these, right?
Yeah, it's almost.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Gary.
Yes.
Zach.
Yes.
Ruth.
Yes.
When we first sit down this morning, when we went to work, there's already. Very good effort. Sounds like it needs a fifth or fourth. Sounds like it does. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.